Time to call this meeting in order. Everyone, please join me on the so we can fly. I fly.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A brief ahead of time something. Periodically, somebody makes a comment, both to me and sometimes to others that I don't speak loud enough, so please remind me of that because I can speak louder, I just don't remember to. Okay. Anyway, let's see where we are. We have done our flag sweep at this point. Entertain a motion from the board to approve the agenda.
Sure my move will approve the agenda.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We oppose, then we have an agenda. Okay. Our next topic on the agenda is the Schindelheim public hearing. So at this point, we will adjourn temporarily for a regular meeting. In order to have a public hearing right now about the Schindelheim property, I'll just read the statement real briefly here so we understand what it is. We will adjourn to a public hearing to receive testimony regarding a proposed board resolution to allow the transfer of what is commonly known as the Schindelheim property to Port Allen in accordance with RCW 39.33.020. And so, we are now in a public hearing, and I'm going to be the first speaker. And I guess I'll defer to our superintendent regarding a public comment that we had that needs to go into the record if she could call us up. Do you want me to kind of bring them on?
Yes, I do want to make two comments for the record. In the original version of the resolution that you, the board will be discussing later that was published, we had an error on the date for the March board meeting for the Port of Allen that which they considered their side of this proposal. We wrote March 1st, the actual regular meeting was March 7th, so we have corrected that in the resolution that we will receive receiving. Also, I wanted to call your attention to, the board has received two sets of communications from a community member who is unable to be here tonight, Mr. Van Bussker, made comments regarding his thoughts on this proposition. I know that you've all had the opportunity to read those. The written comments will be held in our folder, in our file of our board meeting as part of the record, but I wanted to make clear that he had brought those comments forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, unless somebody would like to speak, we're going to open this up for anyone who would like to say something. We'll give you three minutes, and or at a certain point then we will go right into the surplus and transfer if the board is wanting to do that. Is there anybody who would like to say anything? Please come on up, identify yourself, you get three minutes.
Well, I won't need three minutes. I've heard, Herb Gerhart, we hear a belter. First comment is, I think you should read Ken's email because it is being recorded, and I don't know what it says either. It'd be nice to have all the facts of any testimony that people have. The other thing is, I fully support the transfer of property to Port of Allen as long as the school board determines that it has no future value for expansion to the district, which I believe that is the case, but I just want to highlight that if yes, you do need to evaluate that you cannot see if you'll have any valuables or to this. But other than that, I fully support it. I think it's good for the community, it's good for the elementary school kids. We'll be able to drift over there and we'll be a little bit more elaborate of out the receipt form, for sure.
Thanks, appreciate that. Did I pass my three minutes? Yeah. Superintendent Rosenberg, maybe as you can very briefly summarize what Mr. Van Bussker said.
Sure. Okay.
Is this something we can make available to people? Because it's not part of the records yet.
Yes. What, basically he's asking, what is the resch? The original acquisition of this was in 1997, and we have held the property since then. He is pointing out his view that there was a point in time when the district was in conversation with the Samson Center about citing a larger community educational project on the Feller property and that this was going to be, this piece of property was going to be connected to that, so in his view, the Schindelheim piece should be considered along with the Feller property. And then he also pointed out the date correction that we needed to make. And then on his second request, he wanted us to know how the Sweetwater Creek got its name. It was named by a former executive director of the Samson Center, the man who tried to cite the Samson Center on the School District property and on the Feller Trust property inside the Feller EGA. He also wanted us to know that he had shared some documents from the Department of Ecology that he felt you should consider, you have had an opportunity to look at those, that the Samson Center may decide is on the ecologies list for projects that were outstanding on voluntary cleanup projects, and that's, I think, a good summary.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to have any comments on the Schindelheim property?
Yes, I'll.
Okay.
Phil Wolf from Allen. I fully support this transfer. You know, it's been well vetted, county commission meetings, now coordinating council, court meetings, you know, it's been in newspapers, it's been in the community, and you know, from what I've heard, you know, the community supports this. The school district, you know, should not be in a parks and recreation business. You know, when I vote for a bond or I vote for a levy, I'm voting it for the school kids for the district not to run parks. I don't even know if, you know, the school district has a proper authorities to be a parks and recreation district, nor do they have authority to spend money towards it. But, you know, whereas ports have specific authority in statute 53 to have recrea-, you know, to run recreation and to support tourism. And also, the port's going to help navigate through the various complex land use portions of this project. And I believe the original intent of this property, or the acquisition of this property and this grant was for public access and for, you know, and for preservation of the property. So, you know, I mean, that I believe was the original intention at the grant, and that's what should be followed. Now, thank you, I fully support this.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to make any comments?
Mary Swoboda, I live on Old Gopher Highway. I support, I'm sorry, I have to read it. I support the superintendent's recommendation to transfer ownership of the Schindelheim property and the related RCO grant sponsorship to the Port of Allen. The school district, especially while operating under the current board management practice of policy governance, should not be in the business of managing parks and trails. Past school boards maintain proactive oversight of Feller and the Wetlands projects by requiring monthly reports provided either by the Feller Board or the school superintendent. Once the board adopted policy governance in 2009, any mention of Feller ceased in the superintendent's monthly reports to the board. As a result, when the Feller woes became public in 2014, the school board seemed as surprised as the community. The school board, under policy governance, has provided no oversight and no fiduciary accountability for the Feller legacy that was entrusted to the school district by Sam Feller. Instead, the school board relied on the superintendent to do what should have been their job. Because superintendents are responsible for schools and education, the previous superintendent tried to solve the problem with a quick fix solution and then left town, leaving the new superintendent in a no-win situation. The damage has been done, however. My impression is that Superintendent Rosenberg is doing her best to be honest, transparent, and keep people informed of her thoughts and intentions. Therefore, I support Superintendent Rosenberg's recommendation to transfer ownership of this Schindelheim property and the related RCO grant sponsorship to the Port of Allen if the port will accept it.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else like to have any comments? I'll wait about a second or if somebody comes up. Seeing no further comments, then we can move to if the board would like to take action, but we'll have to go back to the regular meeting. Seeing no further, seeing here's no further comments, am I correct? No one else wants to say anything? Okay, then I will adjourn the public hearing so we can go back to our regular meeting. So, we're back in regular meeting. At this point, if the board wishes to do anything regarding the surplusing or whatever it is, transferring is, you guys know what I'm talking about. Long-winded right here. So, I can't say anything or propose anything, it's up to you folks.
Can I add a couple of questions?
Sure.
So, I was curious, the Port of Allen, are they aware of any potential hazard material or any cleanup that might be needed on that site, or are they prepared to take that on?
It is my understanding that they are aware and they are examining what that might mean and how they would respond to that.
Are they committed to the point that if we say yes tonight, they're going to say yes, take it, or are they still invested?
Okay. This is a longer answer than a yes or no answer. Again, my understanding is, well, at the March 7th meeting, they did determine that if the school board approved this transfer, they were willing to approve it, they were willing to enter into the transfer, that it might require an MOU as to what the particular areas were of the transfer, and that we would negotiate that with them from their perspective. So that was their answer at that point. Since then, it appears that they have had some additional, I know they have had some additional presentations from Mindy and the Samson Center folks, they have asked some questions about the Department of Ecology question. I, the, there were two things going at the same time, I think, and I may have to refer to the expert in the room, Mindy, a little bit if you have further questions, but at the time that the Samson Center entered into a voluntary agreement with the State Department of Ecology to look at cleanup at the site, because at one point in history, there was a gas station housed on the front part of the five acres. They were already under requirement from the Environmental Protection Agency, which does the similar work at the federal level to complete a cleanup and a report. They completed that work with the Environmental Protection Agency and received a clearance on much of the part working is on their work and acceptance of their report. The, there were some transitions and stuff with leadership, so the voluntary piece just did, just kind of sat there and didn't get completed, and they became aware very recently that it was still sitting there, so Mindy and her team are following up to get that cleared by bringing forward the information that, the work that the EPA had done, and finding out if there's anything else that needs to be done so that it happens. Is that a good summary?
I read some material, there was just some questions that came up, and I think my biggest concern is, no matter who ends up holding the property and the surplus, if they take it, it's right next to our school, so if there's a drop of anything on there, we don't think is appropriate, we don't want that around our children. So that's my biggest concern, is that wherever this goes, that we make sure that our kids have a clean environment. And so that was my greatest concern.
I think that's very good concern, and I reviewed stack of documentation along with Ms. Harrow about the work that they had done, and when they did the final report to EPA, what was still, what was in question that they needed to report on at that time was, what'd you call it? Arsenic, arsenic, thank you. I'm just having one of those moments. And the scientific work that they did to reply to that pointed out that in the Puget Sound region, there is a heightened level of arsenic for both natural reasons as well as the existence of the old Arco, Arco, Asarco plant in Tacoma that distributed, spewed that stuff into the air so it distributed throughout the sound. And that the levels were quite, they were elevated but still quite low, elevated from natural but quite low as far as any danger levels or anything. And that their evaluation of the existence of them in light of both the natural occurrence in the Puget Sound region and the Asarco plant's influence was reasonable and was found to be within the safety range.
Is there, is there something we can work with it, the MOU that just says that no matter what, we're going to get confirmation that this is a clean site and that we're good to go, the EPA is communicating with the ecology department, just so our citizens know when they send their kids to school, leave down our checklist, and we've got through and confirmed that everything's been addressed?
Sure.
That's just, it plays on my mind, so.
What we can ask is that we can have that information back to share with the board so we have that in the record and we can share with our community.
Okay, we still have, we have no motions on the floor at this point, so.
I would like to move that we approve and adopt the resolution to surplus and transfer to the Port of Allen, the Schindelheim property through the transfer of the RCO grant obligation and sponsorship. And I would like to thank Mary Swoboda for her comments. She was right on target, and I agree with everyone of them, and I appreciate your diligence.
You stole that right out of my mouth. I was going to say before we go further, that I too, I appreciate what Mary said and the support that she just showed for Dana, what she decided to take, I really appreciate that. And then, also, I forgot.
Sure.
Sorry. That school districts should not be parking wreck and courts are for recreation. That's another one on my, on my mind, that I have a good understanding that when, if somebody was going to look forward with this park, no matter, no matter what, they actually have to go through all this stuff, no matter what, because I mean, if they went through with things without going through a cleanup and making sure EPA is happy, then they have a whole bunch of other issues. I know Port of Allen up there, working with everything out there is just, you know, got to be very careful, so.
Interrupted you for a second. I should have stopped you right at the beginning to say, we have a motion on the floor, is there discussion?
Oh, sorry. She started to discuss, but I didn't say. But that was, and then I also, I believe that Allen has a genuine and good intent to do awesome things in connection with that, so.
And to tell you I know what you said, I think my only concern at this point is that it looks like this process started a long time ago, and then we forgot about it a number of years. And that's my concern with making sure it's clean. If we could put maybe a timeline in it that is reasonable, that we can kind of expect and say that, okay, we've got the off there, because I would hate for there to be contaminants there of any kind, it had it sitting 10 years next to our school, nothing being done. That's my concern, just, you know, so I think you're absolutely right, and I want to shrink the timeline of finding out that we're all sure.
Well, in my understanding, I know that Mindy and her team, the community members and Samson Center folks that are working on this have been engaging with the Department of Ecology, and there's a minimal timeline, or at least for the ecology, if they need to do anything further, it takes about 90 days for them to do that. I know that the community group that is working to produce this fabulous park for our community has some timelines so that they can achieve some benchmarks and receive some grant funding. So definitely, things that need to happen, if they need to happen, will happen in the very immediate future, and we'll be able to report that back to the board.
Superintendent Rosenberg, if you could maybe briefly just touch on the thought that I said the superintendent brought up about, do we have education or building on this property?
Well, because of the geography of this property and the placement of the pond and the elevations and where the stream goes, we would not be able to cite the building very effectively anywhere on this five acres that we could use for school property. However, the development that's anticipated by the Port of Allen and their coalition will provide a learning experience space that we, like other people, can take advantage of, and because it's close to the school, we will have the wonderful opportunity to use it for learning, but the Port of Allen will be the people who are maintaining it, and then it will also be available to folks outside of the school district as well. So I think it's really a win-win for everybody.
Any other discussion? I don't have anything further other to say. I think that the presentations is given this evening by Herb, Phil, by Mary and our superintendent really helped clarify basic issues, we talked about them before. I've been sensitive to Ken's concerns, and we actually, about a month ago, on a very rainy day, he gave me a tour of the place, I call it the Baptist tour. But, in my view, each of the points he raised is satisfied, in my mind, by the arguments that have been presented, and to appreciate his contribution, because I believe that public life and a representative government and representative society is a matter of civil deliberation between people of opposed points of view, and it is through the presentation of those different points that we get clarity. And I'm satisfied, in my mind, particularly on Ken's generosity in giving me his time and his knowledge about forests and the history of this place. In light of that, we hold due respect to him, and I'm in favor of this motion.
Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we've got to call for the questions. We have a motion on the floor to approve the transfer of the Schindelheim property as described by Director Gold, and that's rich as our agenda here with all that language. So all those in favor of approving that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? May that motion carry. At this point then, we can move on to the rest of the agenda. I have a very brief comment regarding all this. It's not very germane, but I'm just going to bring it up anyway. I didn't know much about the Schindelheim property, and I'd never walked the Sweetwater Creek until I did find it once, but there was a salmon box on there which goes back to the early 90s, and that was first started, from Delphal, when it first started, from Gary Sealy, the teacher. And he was trained with me in how to do that, way back in 1990, and he and I took the course together down south about doing those kind of things, water watches and stuff. And we became kind of little friends doing that, in any event, he did that project there, I did the same project where I worked with Girl Scout camp, patching salmon for the public. In any case, that box is still there. Thank you, Gary. I'll give it back to the agenda. At this point, it's public comments on the agenda items is what I'm going to talk about. We have three people who have signed up, and I don't know if you've already spoken, but the, now, Perry, you said, end of the meeting, you'd like to bring up something. Herb Gerhart, did you already speak, or you want something else?
No, that was my comment.
You're done. And then Phil Wolf's thinking?
Yeah.
You're done. So we just have one comment at the end to be able to, okay. Thanks. At this point then, it's board member comments. So, let's see. Want to start with Ken?
Yeah. Oh, recently, there was a jogger farm up at Sand Hill, and I went, my kid was running it, and that was brutal to see all those kids, and it was, I think it was first, kindergarten first and second, and I decided they need some help, so I went over and helped with the water. And that was, never passed out water to kids, just liked it themselves. They ran water all over them, and I was, it was my bad because I let them do it, I guess, but, you know, so, it was a, it was a pretty good experience, it was fun. And I just thought they had music going, pretty upbeat stuff, dancing all over, and my kid bit it right into the grass, he was all like, all out of it, but finally he got about 16 laps, and it was pretty good, it was awesome. It took me back to the, I hated jogging and running and anything, so, you know, it was, it was a good thing to see a positive outcome of that, so, yeah.
And I attended the third and fourth grade music presentation at Sand Hill, I guess it was just yesterday, and I didn't realize that Adele, who was over at Maybridge Island now, somebody had a music teacher at Sand Hill, she had 154 students on that stage, and she had control. I was just amazed, and they did a wonderful job, it was a great presentation, they felt good about it, and the parents, of course, always love that. And then, last month, I went to Candy Cox government class presentation, and they were exceptional. They were, they knew their stuff, and I was, I was amazed, and I just, I feel like we're doing some good things here, so, that's the story.
And is there a music program?
There is, the Spring Musical is the sounded music, Open Night is May 13.
Okay, I don't have very many comments, just a neat brag for the Builders Club at Hawkins Middle School. Tomorrow, they're having a field trip for the day to go to a great view, to the horse rescue, it's a sad horse rescue farm called Sunrise Equine Rescue, a trip that they look forward to every year, and they've been doing it for, I don't know, seven or eight years. They used to go to the pit sack for the pit sack horse rescue, now there's of course been one in Mason County, that's where we go to now. They're excited, of course, I'll be going in my truck outside here where I drove to the board meetings, it's full of stuff, but we're going to be working with tools, wheelbarrows, that kind of stuff. Anyway, that's, looking forward to that, that's fun. But otherwise, my health has been, you know, iffy and it's getting better, I just wanted to let folks know, I saw this doctor, shoulder doctor today, and he said, maybe one more month of physical therapy, real stuff in the local office there, and then I'll be doing it at home, and I can start using power wheels, saws, I can't get a chainsaw, and I can't do the brush cutter and that sort of stuff.
Pace yourself, pace yourself.
And pace myself. And then finally, one other brief thing, I came to the entry, whatever you call it, conference.
Conference.
Conference with the state auditors, which is always illuminating for me, and they're having an exit conference, which I will be going to also on May 4th, and I wanted to be sure that you all have a chance, if you would like to go to as well. But if three of us go there, we do have to make a public meeting out of it, so please.
What is the, sorry?
The exit conference for the annual audit.
Oh, for the auditorium views? Oh, I've got to watch. The work that they did.
It's in, it's at nine o'clock.
Nine AM.
If anyone's interested, you know, contact the superintendent, and you're certainly welcome to come to this, and just when, if and when we get three of us, then we will have a public meeting about it, or open that conference to other.
What day is that?
It's Wednesday, May 4th.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, nine o'clock.
I know that last trip was really informational.
Yeah, it'll last about an hour is what they're, at least that's what it's scheduled.
Yes.
Okay, I'm done, so, break handle.
Most of my, I've got three things going. One is, for the last, since our last meeting, I've been on the legislative conferences with our VOSTA people in Olympia, and then they were by phone network, were talking to other people in my position around the state, and so those meetings are over at present. I will be working with VOSTA on some legislation of interest to school boards. I will be working with VOSTA on some legislation of interest to school boards. And I will be attending the VOSTA Reaching Home Conference in Fort Townsend this coming Saturday. And I think that's, oh, and I've finished the, I got a rough pack of board letter for this coming month on our music programs. And I'm really very pleased with what we're doing in music. I want to share one fact because I actually did some research on this. There's a line of research in cognitive psychology, those people that deal with their, you know, neural channels, that music education actually increases student awareness. That there's a kind of a transfer effect on it. And it helps students study in other areas. And I was, there's ifs, ands, and buts and scholarly footnotes on that. But there is a line of research that shows exposure to the arts, particularly to music, has a cognitive impact that's good for other kinds of learning. I was delighted to hear. Though for myself, the aesthetic value will be sufficient.
Thank you, Joe.
So to kind of tag on to that a little bit, my grandson, which is the indoor, we've gotten this little pad and it had musical notes on it. And he would touch it and they all had a different sound. So one of them was a violin and it sounded very sad. And he would push it and then he would cry. And then he'd push it again and cry. I'm like, that's amazing. You're someone with not a lot of verbal skills. And I always said, quit pushing the button. Let's push a happy button, right? But it was amazing to see that communication. And music is so vital because it's a universal language. It's like math. And so I totally agree with you. And I, I wrote some letters about some things about our family recently. And we're kind of digging in our history and talking about experiences in life. And one of the greatest experiences that everybody came up with was in education, having art and music. Because it encouraged them. It helped build such a great school experience for them. That's where the good memories were from. And I think when you lighten load and you're happy, I think you're more absorbing of those other things that are a little more challenging. You need that little break, but yet it's still educational. So, and off that note, I went and met the lady today who was concerned about homeless youth in North Mason. And she had a lot of information to share with me. And it was really neat. She had a lot of networking ideas and ways for us to communicate. And really kind of gather up these kids who have some needs and make sure they're addressed. And the needs come from different areas, but they're all something that we can help with. And we can all make a difference. And I think if you look at how many of us there are and how much the need is, it's nothing we can't tackle. I mean, it's very doable. And I was very encouraged that someone had researched it so far and not only had some answers, but a path to get there. It really was awesome. So, and that's my thoughts for a moment.
Thank you, Director Ritchie. And let's move on to student board member comments. Mackenzie?
Well, next week, Wednesday, Thursday, we're having our mock car crash. And yesterday, our leadership class was We Day, so that's what it's planned. And then tomorrow, we're going to another leadership conference.
Can you tell them a little bit about what we do at We Day?
Okay. So We Day is kind of like, it's like this big, they were all, mostly a lot of schools from Washington get together. It's like you can't, you don't buy your ticket to get to We Day. You have to earn it from fundraising. So you have to do a local fundraiser and like an international fundraiser. So we did, Mission Resitase, which is where we get like hygiene products and stuff to get to local families in need. And we did, our international one was we raised money to buy goats, to send them to other countries for me. And yes, and then we are in there sponsoring, we have really good seats this year. And there's like a lot of speakers and like the vampire Sierra were there for concerts and a lot of regional speakers.
So who all goes to, who's, who's going to say we went?
Oh, it was our leadership class.
Oh, the leadership class?
And did the host of the leadership?
Oh, yes, go as well. Yeah. Yeah, they did. They go over this here with us. The host of the school. And then we also have our, we have a lot kind of our blood drive coming up and our prom, spirit week and our prom, something.
So I have a question. Is the blood drive, can kids just, or students just do that? Or do they have to have a waiver in their parent's sign?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're next to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the consent agenda as it is. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. This is our time, board members, to glean other information about this before we approve or disapprove of the consent agenda. So this is, this is the best time to get more comments or if you have questions and stuff. So is there any discussion regarding this?
In my overview, but a lot of this is boilerplate that the state is bringing to our attention and just kind of routine changes in forms.
Do you refer to the policy department?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think I may. We have an agreement, like at the district and the state, with the Washington State School Directors Association, where they review changes in state law and in the Washington administrative codes and provide us with sample language to have district policies that are aligned with both the Washington administrative codes and RCWs. And the changes that we made in policies this month were necessitated by either changes in one of those two things or by in creating one of those things. There was a previous policy that is now included in one of the new policies. So the previous one is no longer needed. So it was dropped. So those were the kinds of things that created the changes that we had this month.
Any questions regarding policy? Have you mentioned very briefly the bus quotes, though?
The what? Oh, yes. The bus quotes. So we have currently a fairly healthy transportation vehicle fund. But if you'll recall, seven years ago, the district had no buses and purchased all our buses at once. And all of those are coming to the stage where they're not, they have no value for us moving or we're going to have to be replacing them. So we had, last year replaced one bus. We had intended to replace two. But when you buy a bus, you get on the list and you have to wait till they get the bus ready and get it to you. So we only got to buy one. And we bought a smaller bus as well for the, you know, the reasons that we have a smaller bus run. So this year, we have actually two buses that we are purchasing that are well within our budget and also within our transportation vehicle fund. We'll leave it at a healthy place. We will start to increase and get more dollars back in that replacement funding as we go into the 2016, 16, 17 fiscal year or so.
So the information that you were given to us, you talked about wheelchair part of the buses. Are we actually seeing a genuine increase in the?
We are. We have, throughout the district, like many districts in the state, we're having a significant increase in the number of students who have significant disabilities that we need to transport. And in our case, that, you know, we used to be able to have a special education bus that could hold one wheelchair and we could run routes and that would work. But now we need to have more than one wheelchair on a bus in the same way. And that's necessitated the purchase of a specific bus that can do those things, that has the space and the safety features to make that possible.
So that'd be something we'll be looking at further in the future, hope. Any other discussion or questions?
I was really happy to see the sensory temporal now being offered as a curriculum to adopt. I believe that that will help our ELL students. There is not a language barrier there for them. And probably students also who have some learning disability that maybe the language isn't there, but they could get it through the sensory temporal.
It is. It's very powerful for kids who have different kinds of processing disorders, as well as for general education kids who come from home backgrounds where they haven't been as stimulated or they haven't had the exposure to lots of life experiences. We are using the STMAP in paper five classrooms for support right now, as well as in the middle school for some of those students who don't have language or other reasons that, or don't have English language or other reasons that are, have placed their MAP needs at a certain level that it's effective to get them caught up to speed. And we will be using STMAP probably with our newcomer Spanish, or newcomer ELL students who have not had a lot of school exposure prior to getting to high school here as well.
Other questions, comments, concerns? And hearing done, we'll call for the questions. We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as is. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Consent agenda is now approved. Okay, we now move on to the superintendent side.
Okay, you have the budget report from Kathy Seabers. She is on vacation this month. I went to point out that we are relatively on target. We're actually a little over in our receipts and a little under in our expenditures. But, you know, that kind of deals out back and forth from month to month, so we'll watch that. We did have a drop in this most recent month in enrollment that you might have noticed. That was really a very interesting drop. We spent a lot of time researching to find out why. We still have more students than projected, but we had a drop of almost 30 students at the secondary level, high school level. We had three students who we are still trying to reengage in school, who had reached the 20-day limit on another tenant school. We had largely 11 students who graduated early at the end of the trimester. We had a number of students who were part-time running start who became full-time, which then they're no longer count for us, they count for college. So it mostly was for really good reasons, but it was a little bit unusual number. So I want to be sure and call that out for you. Okay, so also, one of the things. I wanted to talk about, as part of my report, the high school, or the Hawkins Middle School principal position. I'm very glad that both Tom and Jo are here tonight. As you know, Tom is going to be joining us at the district officer office upon Prince retirement to take over special services director. And we're very pleased that that is the case. In addition, we.
I'm a cliff.
Cliff. Sorry, I do that all the time. We are also very pleased that, and we have appointed Joanne Warren, who is our current assistant principal, as principal at Hawkins. We're very pleased that we have Jo here and are excited about the directions that she will continue and then move forward with school. And then just yesterday, we completed interviews and hired an assistant principal, a couple of assistant principals. The first one is the new assistant principal at Hawkins Middle School. And we, that's why we had a hand-carried in item for the consent agenda because we wanted to get the new names in the hand-carried item. Our new assistant principal is Todd Herring. He comes to us from South Kitsap where he currently serves as dean of students. And we believe he'll be an excellent member of the administrative team and help us continue and do even greater things and really make some wonderful things happen for our students at Hawkins. In addition, as you know, we, we have been taking a look at how to most effectively meet the needs of students at the elementary school. And with the teachers' evaluation process, the TPEP process, the pressure on the elementary principals to be able to do that much more extensive process with just one person doing it has become overwhelming. Also, under our state funding model, we qualify for a part-time principal at each elementary school. So we have gone ahead and placed that in next year's budget. We did include that in the interviews yesterday as well. And we're also very excited that we have selected an assistant principal that has put his time between San Hill and Belford. Belford, he is an North Mason graduate. His name is Jason Slazer. He is currently one of the Spanish teachers at Commisula High School. He is bilingual and as was noticed by the team during the interview process, he is definitely a kid magnet. He walked into each of the schools, he visited and spoke to the kids in Spanish and was mob physically. So we look very much forward to adding these two young men to our team and also to the leadership that Joanne will create with Todd at the middle school and that the team of Dan and Mallory and Jason will put together at the elementary school for our kids.
Yay.
All right.
I have a comment about the assistant positions in those schools. I think that's really exciting because he's going to see great things in Belford and great things in San Hill and be able to kind of swap, you know, ideas and really network between the two schools.
It is. It's really powerful. And with Dan and Mallory coming on board together this year, they have really built a team and they work together in their decision-making and programming for their buildings even, starting at the end of the year, remember, when they did the welcoming project that is the same at those schools. So it's a very exciting thing for families and kids in our community. Capital projects, everything is moving forward. Taylor, as you know, is completed. And we had the, I think I already told you, we had the welcoming breakfast for the students. The name, the letters for the name are the last thing to happen. And those will be here in the day now and put on the side of the building. The contractor actually finished his punch list over spring break. So that building is absolutely completed. The contractor, a much bigger project, is still completing some punch list items at the high school. But they're getting very close. And that is good. And of course, both buildings will be under a one-year warranty after we accept them completely and the punch lists are completed. At Hawkins, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, which is always a good thing to hear. As of this afternoon, they had poured this slab, which is actually the actual floor that will have the floor covering on top of it, in almost two-thirds of the building. They will complete the rest of the building through the added-on section that will come at this end by next Friday. And the, pretty soon, the outside will start to look like the outside's going to look. So that is very, very exciting news. We have bids out on the renovation of the annex to create our new district offices. And we will anticipate bringing a recommended bid to the board in May. That we put the artwork that are the outside elevations for each of those three projects on bulletin board outside the boardroom so people can take a look. And we have begun the design work on the stadium and stadium complex. And we'll be talking about that with the board probably later in the summer or early in fall. And then I want to just call your attention to the letter that we included in the board packet for you that was a letter of congratulations from the ESD on our successful renovation. If we can.
Thank you.
Okay, this is all community makers planning, this is enough. You've got many North Mason life columnists, because I can't, well, if you've already spoken to that, I'll just, I'll just begin.
Yes, I hope, why don't I add one thing? I got a quotation from, I was trying to get rationale for arts education. And a gentleman at Belford Elementary, Don.
Canal.
Canal. He said that he, his, all his education, very hands-on approach, his people singing and dancing and this kind of thing. He says he, he has the kids play that in order for them to dream. And I just thought that was wonderful, what a great rationale for education, starting with play and then causing the people to think about what they're doing. There'll be his quote in the Mason life, in the North Mason life thing, unless, of course, Pam cuts it. But I, I thought it was, it was very good. And I really appreciated the guy that could, was obviously active in all kinds of arts, theater, drama, et cetera, and spending extra time. And then, what's the rationale? And he just came up with this beautiful sentence.
Personal partial to arts education. Continue your study. We have, you're the one on for the end of May. Do you have any questions? Great. And in July, you don't have an article that I made, that's the students are happy with. That's great. Let's move on to, and for assurance of organization performance and policy review, our monitoring report this year, this month. Our monitoring report this year, this month, our ER eleven district calendar. While we have that, is there a motion?
I recommend that we mine the superintendent's performance to comply with ER eleven, the district calendar.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? I think you've done a good job with it, so that's my discussion. And hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any vote? Okay, are there any comments that anybody wants to put on the monitoring report? None? Okay. We had no policy reviewed last month, so we don't have to worry about looking at that. I'm still thinking about and talking with superintendent regarding the policies much earlier that we, that we talked about in December, that we'd like to have us come back to each other to review, you know, if there's no urgent need to ask us, it's our meat and potatoes at some point. Would you still do that? But we're
I think that would make good sense for a study session as we come back in the summer, because it's really looking at how we assess people's success and that would be a great time to make those adjustments.
Certainly don't want to know it right now, but, okay, is there any way but so, you know, be prepared in what sense for that to come, come back again? Okay, we also, I just missed that, we have Mason County Joint School.
We do, that's coming up on May ninth, and, um, we, uh, we have heard from one board member that she will not be able to attend that meeting. That meeting is primarily to engage in discussion with our legislators about our priorities as superintendents and board members from New York Mason County and what we would like to see them accomplish in the coming year. We had some pretty good representation when we did this in the fall, and so much so that we decided as a group of superintendents that we'd like to repeat the process and have scheduled this meeting, so.
And what time is that?
I don't have it memorized. I think it's in the announcement, it was in the
Anyway.
Where is it? In Shelton at the school board office.
And I was the one who said I was not.
Right.
Okay.
I think I'm available. So three of us go?
We will announce it.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm available to go.
Is there an opportunity to have it also to have them go do our meetings? Because it would be kind of nice to say, this is what we told you and this is what you did and
We can ask Shelton, if they're the host, if they would be willing to do that. I'm certainly happy to ask them to do that.
Okay. We're in the phase, so at this time, it's announcements and comments from public, so I don't know, better. Yeah, you're on.
My problem is I'm used to interrupting things in the middle of Kiwanis meetings and you won't let me interrupt, so. So I have to write them down and you'll have to excuse me if I don't hit them all in them. Saturday, there's going to be, we're going to work on repairing trails. It's a Kiwanis project combined with Theller, the salmon enhancement and Farm, uh, River's Edge, Water's Edge, I, I didn't say. So if anybody wants to help out on that, we can always use the help. Uh, I did attend the horse rescue last year with the kids, the Builders Club kids. That was a blast. It was a learning experience and a lot of fun, and they did muck up, buck out stalls. So they did handle them. Of course, they didn't get out of class and not get something that wasn't quite so pleasant. Just one of those things I learned a long time ago. Western Washington does have a string of volcanoes and that's where the arsenic, a lot of the arsenic and mercury is coming from, it's contaminated, and there's not a darn thing you can do about that. What time is the mock car crash? Is the public invited and where is it going to be held?
It is, I've got it right here. I was looking it up.
What, why, where?
I ran into a high school student today who told me about it and I was really thrilled that she did. It is April twenty-seventh and it starts at eight AM. It's at the high school and they are actually going to come in with a gurney into a classroom, point out a student who now gets to be dead for twenty-four hours or something like that. I mean, it's really incredible and she was excited about it and she wanted us to be there if we could and I would encourage the school board, uh, to, to attend that. I, I went a number of years ago, but this seems to be a very special
This is a much more in-depth process and I think they've worked really hard to use a nation, nationally known process that really brings it close to home. So families and students have applied and agreed to be the victims of the accident and, um, they are going to disappear.
Right.
When they come and get them for twenty-four hours, they don't get to go home. They're going to be in an isolated place and there are a lot of pieces involved in this experience for everyone. We are making actually an announcement to the whole district, so parents from any of our schools don't get unduly stressed when they see the huge number of, uh, vehicles of police and fire that are at the high school on that day.
Oh, no, nothing happens during
So it's going to be very, very exciting.
Oh, I'm actually one of the biggest, yeah. Yeah, so we all have like scenarios, so I was like driving and texting and killed my passenger.
Is this going to be evolving throughout the days? It's something that, since we, if three of us were there at one time, we have to announce that, should we stage ourselves?
I, we'll just announce it, but, um, any public that wants to come into that, they're going to have to check in through the building. We don't want to be disruptive of, of the building process, but, um, we can announce that.
Are you, um, I'm getting curried Sunday, so I'll be not there, but will you be posting pictures and making those?
Oh, yeah, they'll, it'll be on the website.
Our video production, I'm pretty sure, is making a video.
Oh, very cool.
Tomorrow, right?
Actually Wednesday and Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, um, today is Thursday, the twenty-first is the twenty-second. Don, we'll sit down. Sorry, Don.
Did we use up my three minutes?
No.
Uh, blood drive is a really great idea to get the kids thinking about that at this early age, since less than ten percent of the population donates blood. And you can give them a challenge and they can try to catch up with me, I'd donate them three gallons, since they finally let us healthcare providers do that. The Hawkins conversion is working way faster than Highway Three's third lane. Compliments on that one. Yeah, it's pretty amazing. What else do I have? Oh, yeah. What's the status on Theller?
We are, um, still investigating the things that the board has asked us to investigate as far as possibilities. We've talked to some different agencies about potential interest, but we don't have enough to report at any, any, this time on anything that we look forward to quite yet.
When the fact of the, the mock crash, are you actually going to have smashed cars somewhere in, at the stadium?
Yeah.
Okay. At, starting at eight?
Um, I don't know, I think it might actually start at nine, because we're starting our thirty-two minutes at eight.
Okay. So if the public wanted to show up at the stadium?
I think it's either eight or nine.
It's nine AM. I think it is. The lower football field.
Thank you, Arlen. That's why you're here.
And I, I will comment, I made this comment when it was first discussed, I think two meetings ago. Hopefully you won't have to do what one of my nieces did. Uh, she was the victim in southeastern Ohio. Her dad happened to be the principal and a part-time minister, and five years after she was a fake victim, she was a real victim. So let's hope that the kids learned something and we don't have to play that game. Okay.
Thank you very much. No one else signed up? Does anybody would like to offer any comments at this point before we close?
Well, I mean, uh, I'd like to mention, uh, so on, uh, so on the twenty-fifth, uh, that's a Monday, there's going to be a meeting about transportation, um, in this county. You know, about the transportation human program. It's part of a voice meeting at Masonic Hall at seven o'clock. Yeah.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, time for announcements and comments.
I have a, a question and maybe I wasn't paying attention. Or I forgot.
For, for superintendent comments, I'm so, great.
Sorry, I should have waited. I did jump in the dead on. The, um, the alternative school, they chose, um, they were choosing a mascot. And I didn't hear what it was.
Navigators.
No, Pathfinder, but they were going to like, they were thinking about a Sasquatch or what was the, the actual, they sure came back and
They're still working on that.
Oh, okay. I thought I missed something and I'm like, well, maybe, because I, I guess I did hear it, sorry, I think I did hear it.
No, they, they decided that they would be the Pathfinders.
Yeah.
But they also did have an interest in the Sasquatch, so they were currently trying to find a way to use the Sasquatch as part of their, um, depiction as a Pathfinder and they're working on that.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad I didn't miss it, so. I'm going to be forward to hearing the staff.
I don't know anything.
I did mine.
Well, at the beginning of the meeting, we had not paid share and I wasn't sure which month I was in, but I went to the robotics competition in Auburn and we had two North Masons to consider on that team and they were competing and they were building robots and robots were being destroyed, pieces were falling off, they had to plan ahead. And I had a little tour and it was huge, high school, I couldn't believe what that high school was, but it was amazing to see the forethought, that the learning process of, well, we had this robot in this room, so now we have three extras, so if that breaks again, we can replace it. And that the timing was just amazing. I thought it was great. So, um, I think they were getting a lot from each other, learning a lot, and then our team is relatively new, so they had other teams that were older that would come in, kind of measure them and say, don't forget to do this, or here's an experience we had. And I just thought it was really, really positive. That's mentioned, it was kind of fun watching the robots go at each other, you know? It was cool. And they're looking for donations, they get a lot of help locally and that's great, but they're always looking for more help because these kids are building these things and they need courses and stuff, which I think could be a lot of fun for some type of builders club to build a course for the robotics team, so just making out loud would be kind of cool and integrate more too. Anyhow, that was all I had.
So, fun. Focus on builders club, I have a good thought there too. I don't know what they might do to you too. So, cut back into builders club is doing something different this year. They've not done for us, they're doing a Relay for Life team with the key kids, you know, Belther, and they're trying to get the key club to join in on it, but I've not been able to get a hold of or I've tried too hard to get a hold of our spot regarding easily advice for key club. All these clubs, by the way, are sponsored by Kiwanis, that's why they work in it. They're doing Relay for Life, they have some incredible ideas.
Don's got something back there.
I was going to wait for you to finish. I just, I was fortunate, this is two years in a row that I got to be a judge for the state, now WSSDF, science fair and, and engineering, uh, competition at Bremerton High School on the first and second of April. If anybody's interested in doing that next year, it's going to be the thirtieth of March or thirty-first of March and first of April at Bremerton again. We get to brag a lot because one of our kids from here, we not only got a scholarship and a job and everything else, but changed the way we look at salmon habitat because of his science project, how many years ago?
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. But the, the judging is, is unbelievably fun. It's a, it's a challenge to do things fast, but there's, there's some really smart kids out here.
And that was Lee who?
Lee Bowden.
That name sounds familiar.
We, we brag on him, this was the second year I've done it, but I've been hearing it from Mike Huey, who's the president, for the last probably ten years, that they brag on Lee all the time, that you can actually do something with your science fair projects beyond just a project.
Well, and to tag on that, Lee Bowden, he was actually on one of my listings because we had some environmental concerns and it was great because the county comes out and I'd like to kind of give a kind of gist of what they think it is, and he is so knowledgeable, he knew exactly what he was looking at, was able to kind of relay any concerns he had to my client, which totally made her feel better and she was relieved to know exactly what was going on with her property. I just really appreciate him and I never told you that, but
Well, thank you.
Every time I hear it, I'm like, yeah, that guy was awesome, so.
He is a direct result of the Environmental Education Program that went on. Karen Luddy was his teacher, she got him going on that path. He has his own business. I mean, there are several, many, I think, graduates from that program that have their own business and that's what I would like to see come back.
Yes.
She sparked me with one comment. I was at the MTA
Blame me for it.
She was at the, I was at the MTA meeting this last week and Mason County's going to get its first electric bus. And maybe one of the ideas for a science program that would be good for people in the north end. We don't think it's got enough power to get up here and go, and go, and go to the shipyards. So if someone would invent a better battery, I think I could get the board to buy another bus.
Or better road.
Great, I have one brief comment to the members of the public. We're, by law, we're not allowed to have these conversations except right here. That's one reason we do them, just so that people also like to, like that or something like that. We don't get to do this, um, this is our only chance at, at board meeting, that's why we have it built into our agenda. So, thank you. Otherwise, our next item is, or self-assessment.
I have some comments. I, I have three. Uh, first, I would like to give Jo Warren an opportunity to say anything to the board that she would like to say as our new Hawkins Middle School Principal. I didn't do that earlier and in case you want to, you have a few minutes?
Oh, let's go with the three. Three. Five at a time. I want to thank, um, the amazing for giving me the opportunity. I have been an educator, working on my eighteenth year, um, I did three years at OMAC High School. Found the community, they're very warm and welcoming, which is the same community I found here, even though I taught South Kitsap High School. So I'm really looking forward to it. I'm thoroughly enjoying our kids, they're great kids, they, they take care of each other. Parents are involved, so it's been a really good thing. Excited, Tom has put a lot of great things in place that have kind of just, for me, just to pick them up and continue, so that makes it really good. And he's going to stay there so I can keep calling, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate all the amazing staff. Pretty awesome, so looking forward to it.
Ah, well, welcome.
All right.
Second, I just want to give you a little heads up, we're going to have some special guest speakers at May's meeting. You remember we highlighted some students last May. This May, we are going to have like the students of our new Slat team. Slat, I always forget the W, but it stands for students, um, who are making sure that we have access to technology and that they're advocating for technology and the use of technology in our schools. This is a class that we have at the high school, the students are serving as a health desk for North Mason High School, as we move into next year for North Mason School District, and even the intent is to serve as a health desk for the community. They are currently developing their own website where they are, are posting some videos on how to do certain things, some, uh, how to do this for dummies, kinds of help sheets, kinds of information, how to contact them for help. So the students who are members of the team will be here to talk about what they're developing and what they look forward to having available as we move forward, and that will be very exciting.
Oh, that's awesome. Can we call them then?
That's, that's the idea.
They'll need practice, right? Let me know.
Finally, as you know, uh, technology being a major driver, the education is in the process of a huge transition. What the classroom or the learning environment, if it's not the classroom, looks like is going to be very different five years from now than it is today or was even more ten or fifteen years ago. And so we're having to make sure that we're ready for change, that we're changing in a purposeful way so that we're creating the students who meet our stated board state mission statement and that we're creating an adults who are ready to be successful in their futures. And so today I gave the administrative team a little article to read that we're going to refer into, then I gave you a copy on your place because it is a one-page article. It's from that very well-known educational journal, Fortune Magazine. And it was an April first, April Fools Day article, How to Kill a Good Idea. Um, I think you'll find it interesting, but I think it is very easily highlights what sometimes happens in any organization with ideas that are good, that should happen, that sometimes don't. And it will help us as an administrative team by referring back to this very simple little article, make sure that that little article, make sure that that goes with North Mason.
Okay, we all have access to the school calendar and stuff, but I'll just give a quick reminder, May sixteenth, Monday, is the event, has always been at the old high school, it's going to be at the new high school where scholarship awards are announced as a result to the students. I go to that every year. You're all welcome to the halls as well, you can get a piece of cake, you know, juice or whatever, if you mind going, please feel free. If you want, it becomes a public, official public meeting. Nevertheless, please feel invited, we'll be there. Your turn?
It starts at six o'clock. It's a special.
Oh yeah. Oh yeah, yeah, I know.
And those students who have worked hard and are receiving scholarships, it's the most ever done of the year for me, I love it. And Art and I are both on the Scholarship Foundation Board and just reviewing their portfolios and seeing them come up to get their awards is, it's just a wonderful thing. So I would, I would encourage all of you to.
Is that going to be in the library or in the commons?
It'll be in the, the Forming Arts Center, I think so. I think it, yeah, I think it'll be in, I don't think it'll be in the commons, no, I'm pretty sure it'll be in the Forming Arts.
In the theater.
Now, this is seven?
Six, six.
No, it's not the sixth.
No, it's six o'clock.
Oh, yes, yes. Sixteenth is six.
Sixteenth is six.
Yeah.
I have a question. I, we might have said this before, also, graduation, we are, are we doing that at the Pavilion?
Yes, we have said that before, yes, we are doing it.
I thought we did, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
We will do it at the Pavilion while we are still involved in construction, so this year sophomore class, the class of two thousand eighteen, will be the actual first class that we do graduation here.
Yeah.
Our site, because we won't have any concerns about partnering or anything else by that time, all of our construction people will be out of the way.
I still see the question come up on like the Facebook, the local.
We sent notification home to all students.
I think it's family, like maybe a set of family of those students. What date is that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay, moving to the board self-assessment. My job this time, our, did we plan our agenda, did we follow the agenda, are we prepared for it, proceed without interruptions and all these things that are on here, I'm doing a very poor job, and I did this very well, but I think we did all of the items on that first portion, general meeting we did were satisfactory, so I'm checking that, under the part two, government's principles review, do our actions occur at the policy level rather than the operational level? I think that's pretty clear, but everybody, if that is the case, do we review the policy about the topic before discussing the issue? I think we do that and writing additional policies, we did it tonight, we start with prostate and become more detailed, et cetera, et cetera. We minimize time spent monitoring past performance, I think we do. We routinely dedicate time to reviewing and improving our own process, well, that's part of what this is, but it's also the policy, you know, policy governance part that we work with the superintendent on. Do we clarify and prioritize our values when considering outcomes and I believe that we do that. Do we follow an annual calendar? We work on our school calendar, we have our own calendar for the things that we bring up each meeting for review. Does the board chair help the board efficiently conduct this meeting? Okay, I'm going to say it to you. Does the board spend most of its time deliberating issues, defining, clarifying its vision and linking its community as opposed to fixing things? I believe that's really the case, we don't try to fix things, we work that way otherwise. And do we support the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of our policies? I believe that is the case also, so I'm going to put yes on all the criteria and I'm going to put it overall satisfactory. Okay, and finally, our next school board meeting will be held May nineteenth, after the May sixteenth event. May nineteenth, which is Thursday at six-thirty PM, right here. We are now adjourned.